Bonsoir tout le monde, bonsoir à tous. Super branché émission Transition. Nous vous bienvenue dans la première sortie Transition pour mois novembre. Comme nous connais chaque vendredi dans l'Essa, si on va devoir le casser à toute fanio pour garder, pour suivre l'émission ça. Et comme nous connais chaque vendredi tout, objectif nous c'est éduquer, informer, motiver, conseiller. Et nous connais tout chaque vendredi tout, c'est là pour nous porter un sujet qui est important pour même cap vivre, pour même cap fonctionner quel que soit dans domaine où on vit là. Et là ça ça j'ose dire à nous penser, si je ça ne peut être quoi, l'école attire l'attention et là même important pour vous, pour comprendre qui genre système éducation fonctionner dans communauté Salisberg. Donc c'est nécessaire j'ose dire à nous qu'il y a deux mondes, deux responsables, deux leaders qui peuvent parler nous sur ça qui way à comment Board of Education a fonctionné dans Waikomiko County. N'essentiel pour nous, lycélagé parce que je dis à dans pile parole qui peut valer, là compte il pose, là tourner après pour cap présent tout de mon ça yo qui peut le partager information avec nous mais si tout, partager comment Board of Education ou bien conseil éducation dans compter Waikomiko a fonctionné. Vous êtes branché, là tourner après. Nous retourner après pause là, j'en ai annoncé là j'ose dire si je n'en peux pas baser sur comment système éducation a fonctionné dans Salisberg. Mais pour nous permettre de intervenir à nos pieds bien et but de sa parole valia et pour nous permettre tout, puis bien comprendre, nous va le font ici switch en anglais. Today, as I already talk about, it's an honor for us to meet two leaders, two powerful leaders in our community, especially in the domain education field. We're gonna see or we already see what we're gonna talk about, you have already an idea about.
Hi, Dr. Hallin.
Yes.
And Mr. Briggs, how you doing?
Very good.
So, as I said, we are very happy and it's an honor for us to be able to meet with you, to be able to talk about how the education system operate and the community. But first of all, as they always say, lady first, let's start with Dr. Hallin. Can you share with us, first of all, before the education system, who is that powerful leader?
Who am I?
Well, I am the superintendent of schools. So I am responsible for the education, for the organization of Waikomiko County Public Schools, which is 24 schools, 15,000 students. So it is a lot of work, a big job, but it's something that I've done for 40 years now and love my work. Really enjoy working with Dr. Briggs as well. So we're happy to be here, thank you for having us.
A couple of people for meeting with us and let's see about Mr. Briggs.
So I support Dr. Hallen, I'm the assistant superintendent. I've spent all 21 years of my career here in Waikomiko County and look forward to sharing some information with you guys and your community tonight to see how you guys can continue to work with us and support the students of Waikomiko County.
Good, so even if you didn't want to talk more about yourself, okay, I can understand that. So let's continue and let's go straight to the topic of the day. How the Board of Education operate and the community? I know it's a big question, but I think it will be great to talk about what they are doing in the Board of Education.
Well, it is a big, very complex organization. But basically, we are educating students pre-kindergarten, sometimes even earlier, but mostly pre-kindergarten until they graduate from high school as seniors, mostly 18-year-olds at that point. And we are preparing them to go on to careers and work colleges, whatever their aspirations are beyond high school. We want to provide them the skills and the knowledge that they need in order to go on beyond high school to whatever their goals may be.
Okay, so it's from pre-kindergarten through high school?
Yes.
But by talking, okay, talking about high school, do you meet any challenges about the high school, after the high school? What is the percentage of student who go to college?
The overall percentage, Dr. Briggs--
About 68% of our students go to either a two- or four-year college or university. Some go straight into the job force, workforce, and some military. And some unfortunately aren't sure exactly what to do.
Yes, of course, yeah, of course, okay. So we are in the college part, so we know the Board of Education manage the public school, right? So does any difference in private and the public school curriculum?
So in Maryland, in public school, we must adhere to the Maryland curriculum, the Maryland standards curriculum framework. And in the private schools, they don't necessarily have to adhere to those guidelines. So it could be different, but all public schools in the state of Maryland have to adhere to those same standards. So, but I can't speak to what a private school in the county would do. They have a little bit more freedom to, they could utilize our curriculum or they might be able to do something else.
Okay, so talking about curriculum, so what kind of courses you have from pre-kindergarten to high school?
We have a lot. First of all, just when we talk about pre-kindergarten, that's we are trying to offer the opportunity for all four-year-olds. So if somebody is watching at home and they have a four-year-old, we would love to have them in our school system and we have some spaces still available. So starting as early as four. And we teach everything, you know, the English, math, social studies and science and we have--
You said from four years old?
From four years old.
Okay, let me inform or let me translate because I think it's an important part for the community. Et là partir ça, moi voulait attirer attention au bout de cap garder émission. Parfois, nous qui doit pas prêter attention ou bien nous qui doit dire que si maintenant from ten years six ans, baisser tant vous la l'école. Maintenant, Waikomiko County ou bien dans Board of Education, si mon yo cap commencé à l'école à partir de quatre ans.
Thank you.
Do you understand what I say?
I have no idea.
Four.
So now let's get back to the answer because I wanted to inform them about the four years.
And that is, that's very important, so thank you.
And I think it's, if I could just add before you go on, it's especially important for English language learners to start as early as possible in our schools to learn the language and begin to integrate into the school system. And for our ability to work with the parents as well.
Okay, so you have a program for the parents as well?
We support the parents, yes. Lots of parent universities where we we kind of survey the parents, find out what needs they have. And then we design our own sort of curriculum to work with the parents to help meet the needs of their kids. We heard firsthand, they don't know how to, some of them struggle helping their kid maybe say with math homework. Well--
Yes, this is an issue about work and how about math homework?
So we worked with our math supervisor and some of our math teachers and we actually designed a course where we invited parents in and gave them some tips and tools for helping their students when they come home and have that math homework.
Do you mind if I translate?
Don't mind it up.
Yes, okay. Là partir ça, ça voulait faire message et faire passer c'est que des programmes même, il mettait sous pied pour aider parents qui est technique pour travail mathématique à Timounyo. Comme ça arrive des empile parents et pas seulement parents high science et de façon loge, là on qui programme ça, il y a pas technique à vous, mais qui les gens ou supposer fait mathématique avec Timounyo de technique qui est aussi simple, qui pas compliqué cap permet tout, non seulement il était tout mais des petits tout pour cap réussir dans la classe ou bien dans salle à parpoche. Yes. You're welcome, even if you don't understand.
And then addition to, obviously, we teach math, social studies, science, reading and writing, but we also have a very strong fine arts program. We value the arts and have that in all of our schools.
Okay.
And--
From which grade?
From pre-K, from four-year-olds all the way up. They are exposed to a well-rounded curriculum.
Math also?
Obviously, it looks different, right? So as a four-year-old math, we're learning about numbers and then as they get older, we're doing more and more with those numbers every year. But yes, as early as four, once we get them in our building, we exposing them to a wide variety of content.
Okay, that's a good point. So let me do my other job again. So là partir ça, lis, lis, lis pour connait que yo apprend Timounyo d'épinat, tu sais encore là, déjà défini en tic à tic, mathématique, let's see, écriture et puis dessin, ça au dou, à la. Ça a dit d'épinat, non pipi t'il a, j'ai Timounyo commencé à apprendre by ça, donc là viens permetty, au fur et à mesure Timounyo a grandi, là pipi bien comprend et puis là pipi bien expérimenté dans chaque matière ça. Yes. So if you don't want to add anything--
No, I think he covers that topic well. It's, it is a well-rounded curriculum, not only fine arts, but physical education, health.
It's a lot of things.
Yes, obviously, those core subjects of math and reading and then social studies and science--
Yes, because sometime I say you, okay, the Board, if I can say like that, the Board of the Education, they more focus on math, math reading. And I can see this here, they remove the spelling part. And can you share with me why you remove that part?
We didn't really remove spelling. That's, we have been working since the fall of the year answering questions of parents who don't quite understand that. It is part of the English language arts instruction. And rather than having an isolated list of words like I had when I was a student in school where here's your spelling list for this week, teachers will develop lists of words based upon the other content that they're teaching so that that list is more meaningful to students. If they're studying a particular topic in social studies, for example, that list may include words that are relevant to that topic that they're studying in social studies. And so they're still learning to spell. They're still held accountable for how they learn to spell. It's just part of the English language arts program rather than a separate list and a separate grade.
And I think I can add something. The way you are doing it right now, I think it's very important and interesting. Why I said that? Because I know every week children has like a reading to do. So there's a question, they has to think about and they have, they has to give the main idea, I think. They can learn vocabulary from that. So even if you don't give the list of words anymore, but they still learning, they still doing the spelling part.
And we believe they're learning it even better. Instead of it being in isolation--
Exactly.
Those words mean nothing to them, but now they're applying it--
Yes, they put them in a sentence and they can, they don't, sometimes they just need to use a dictionary. But they learn it, put it in a sentence and make, how I can say that, as a topic and talk about the word. I think it's a, it's a great way to do the spelling.
We're glad you agree.
No, it's the reason why I asked, it's the reason why.
Appreciate your answer.
Yeah, so I have another question. It's about the PTA meeting, what is about?
Okay, so parent participation in our schools is very important. We want parents to be involved. Some of our schools have a well-organized PTA group where parents do organize fundraisers and do different things like that to support the schools. Some of our schools actually don't even have an organized PTA. That doesn't mean we don't need those parents involved. And it doesn't mean that those parents aren't involved, they're just involved in different ways. It's important that parents are communicating with their teachers. It's important that they're encouraging their students to get good grades, to come to school every day. Attendance is critically important. It's important that the parents are encouraging proper behaviors. Unfortunately, sometimes--
So, sorry people, I stop you. So the PTA meeting, it's about the meet with their parents?
Correct, and so when they get to, when parents have the opportunity to come in and meet with their teachers, that is critically important for that, for them to do so. However, we're also understanding that parents with work schedules and other commitments and other kids, that's not always feasible. It's not the, you know, I can all come in, you know, somebody stays at home with the other kids and somebody comes in and meets with the parents. That's not practical anymore, not in our society right now. So, but we don't, that doesn't mean we don't value that interaction. So whether it's use of emails, phone calls, we have a class dojo, I don't know if you know anything about class dojo?
I got it on my phone.
Yep, my phone, my phone as well, we both have fourth graders. That's important parent communication. And so that even when I'm at work worrying about all 15,000 kids, I can get an alert on my phone about my one that's in fourth grade from his teacher.
Know what, what is or her doing?
That's correct. So it's just important that they stay involved, but understanding that it looks different for every parent. We do have some parents who come in and volunteer because their schedule allows it. Again, if you can come in and volunteer, we welcome you in our schools, but that's not expected or possible for all parents.
Talking about volunteer, how parents can be more involved on the children education?
I would encourage parents to go in and speak with, talk to their teachers, but talk to the school administration about what their needs are in the school in terms of what they need parents to help with, to be volunteers for. Principals and administrators and teachers are always looking for additional sets of hands. And, you know, it would probably vary greatly based upon what that parent is comfortable doing, what their strengths are or areas of maybe a skill background that they have, a career that they have where they can lend support. But that is, that is something that we're always welcome. We're always open to parents coming in and helping in classrooms or in the office or whatever the need is at school event.
So that means you will need, you will need parents to be more involved in the education system, like be a volunteer, right?
Yes. Anyways, the parents can be involved is going to help their children in school.
Okay, donc, t'es né partir ça, avant nous propos là, qui parle de implication parents dans contribution bien qui joue cabine volonté, effet volonté dans sa qui way à éducation petit tout dans l'école là. Là propose, là tourner après. Nous retourner après pause là, nous t'es parlé dans première partie à sur sa qui way à comment Board of Education ou bien conseil éducation dans Waikomiko County a fonctionné. Donc nous qui avec nous deux représentants board là qui partager quelques informations avec nous qui permettent nous comprendre comment board là fonctionner et qui permettent nous tout connait comment nous cap aider au pis avancer dans éducation petite. Et j'aurais dit dans première partie à, yo tout, depuis petit tout qui quatre ans, l'ica four years, l'ica commencé à l'école. Donc ça a dit pas, quitte un petit tout, chut à la calle ou cap voyez l'école pour petit tout. Autant de fois, il y a un pibonnet, autant de fois, la pibon pou. So I just say to summary about what we talk about in the first part. So as I already mentioned, I think people can ask. Et là est ici? It's crucial, but let's continue. Before that, and we can call, et nous car il est tout, nous car il est, nous car vous émetz, mais là pibon si nous relais pour participer dans émission. I just want to let them know, they can call. And we all this, oh really, okar really? Okar really?
Okar really.
Yes, good, we need to stick here. Okay, in the first part, we talk about PTA, but what is the meaning of PTA meeting?
Really, the true meaning, sometimes it gets kind of lost sometimes, but the true meaning is for the dialogue between the teacher and the parent about the student.
Okay, why I ask that? Because I'm a parent, like as you can see. Sometimes when they invite people to the PTA meeting, they don't know what does that mean. So it's the reason why I wanted to pay attention on what we are doing in PTA meeting. So let me translate for the community who's watching the show. PTA meeting, commencer sous moi qui sont parents, PTA meeting, par l'autre balle, si on rencontre board là, met des soupiens à travers l'école biblique, ben, appeler nous board là gérer système l'école publique dans Waikomiko County. So PTA meeting, sont rencontre qui faites entre parents avec professeur. Donc ça a dit ça permet de poser question, connait comment petit tout a évolué dans l'école. Et j'aime toujours dit là, aime toujours rappeler nous que lit très important pour nous impliquer plus dans éducation petite. C'est pas juste seulement des petits tout cas l'école, petit tout et non pour l'école, mais il important chaque legging rencontre, maximum des fois au café, c'est impliquer au dans sa qui way à rencontre qui gagne au et donc on, Waikomiko, yo parle de PTA meeting, ça a dit sont rencontre qui faites à parents et puis l'école là, plus précisément avec professeur, pour comprendre comment petit tout a progressé. So I said, I let them know about the PTA meeting, what is the purpose of the PTA meeting? This is a meeting, as you said, between parents and teachers. So I think it's very important to let people know what we are doing in the PTA meeting.
Can I add one thing?
Of course.
Just if parents want to talk to their teachers and that's critically important, they do not have to wait until a PTA meeting. Or if they have to work at night and they can't come to the PTA meeting.
They can ask for help, a special word?
In fact, that's often a better time. Sometimes what you'll find in a PTA meeting is that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Briggs, because you've been schools more recently than I've been running a school.
Between two doctors, yes, let's talk about education doctors.
Often, a PTA meeting will begin with a business meeting of the PTA organization. So the leaders, the parent leaders of that organization would come together in an auditorium type style and would talk about the business of the PTA, which might be, we have a fundraiser coming up, how many of you will volunteer to sell popcorn or whatever? So the business and how they're going to raise money to support the school. That business meeting might last, I don't know, 15, 20 minutes maybe?
Maybe half hour.
And then parents are discussed to go meet-- go meet with teachers in their classrooms. But often, if there's, you know, 10 or 15 parents that want to meet with your child's teacher and you have something more involved that you want to talk with the teacher about, probably the better thing to do is to schedule a separate meeting. Because often at the PTA meeting where there are other parents waiting, you don't get into a lot of detail. The teacher might tell you, this is what we're working on right now, your child doing really well, or your child's are work a little harder in this particular area. But a more in-depth conversation should occur beyond the PTA meeting, if that makes sense.
And if languages, if there's a barrier, which some members of the community might have a language barrier and not feel comfortable communicating with the teacher, letting us, letting the school know that in advance, we can arrange either to have a translator present or some sort of--
Any language.
In any language.
Okay, that's cool. So I think it will be useful to share the information with people. So et ça deux docteurs, yo partager avec nous, c'est que yo, là nous connais PTA meeting non, même loi à la donne parce que PTA meeting non, comme nous connais les missions, c'est permet parents yo rencontrer avec professeur yo et surtout dans première partie, et rencontre ça, et c'est parents rencontre qui dure longtemps, cas dure entre à 45 minutes maximum. Donc, dans première partie rencontre ça, le plus souvent, yo partager information avec parents sur ça qui way à comment l'école fonctionner ou bien qui ça qui permet l'école jouer une corbe pour yo fonctionner. Même après ça, si ouais, voilà rencontre ça, il difficile pour communiquer avec professeur parce que c'est un pile parents, c'est pas seul au même. L'important pour mander yo rencontre individuelle avec parents, avec professeur, pour cap permet tout, puis bien connait comment petit tout a progressé et comment petit tout a évolué dans ça, dans l'école. Did you get me? L'école.
Perfect.
Yes, it's easy. So as I'm still waiting for calls, I need to know what the Board are doing against the bullying as we know that a huge issue for the kids, the bullying. It's not, it's easy, you think, it's easy, you can answer?
We can answer.
Okay.
Oh, sure, well, we know that's an issue. And we, we hope that students develop relationships with adults in our buildings, with whether it's a teacher or a guidance counselor, an administrator, and that they would feel comfortable going and talking to someone about that. So that, that is really how we can help them find a solution to whatever is going on. There's, there are, there are other processes that are in place for reporting bullying if someone's not as comfortable talking to someone. There are bullying report forms that we can fill out. So, but I think the most important thing is making-- So, but I think the most important thing is making sure that, working with students closely enough that they feel comfortable talking to an adult about whatever problems they're experiencing.
There's someone, or there's a place where the, the kid can go to talk about the bullying issue, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have guidance counselors in our schools, and it could be a school nurse, it could be really anyone that the student is comfortable having that conversation with. Because it isn't always necessarily the classroom teacher that they feel comfortable with. It could be any adult in the building, it could be the cafeteria employee, it could be anyone in the adult, anyone in the building that, once they report what's going on, that person is going to seek assistance in helping that child solve problem.
Okay, I think you answered the question for our, guess there's nothing else for now? Okay, what you need, other more, other questions?
Other questions?
You would like to have more?
Yeah, more questions.
Okay, so let's wait, let's wait.
But just following up on what Dr. Hanlon was saying, communication is the key. If we don't know about a situation, we cannot do anything about it. Um, our, we have very caring staff who care about kids and want to help them in any way possible. So it's just getting that information so that we can do an investigation and we can try to get to the root of the issue so that we can help those kids. Because we don't want any, I don't, I don't want my son bullied, I don't want your son bullied, and it shouldn't be happening. And if we can address it, we most certainly do.
Okay, that's good. Okay, let's continue because I'm still ready.
It's okay.
So we talk about PTA, we talk about how the parent can be more involved, and the, we talk about the volunteer thing. And which level a parent can be a volunteer?
All levels, they can volunteer in elementary school, middle school, and high school. Um, most parents, if I'm being honest, are more comfortable at the elementary level, but we welcome volunteers at all, at all levels, but most happen at elementary.
So eh, before we have the show, we talk about the, the job opportunities for, for people in the community. Can you share it with us?
Oh, for career jobs? Yes, certainly. Um, as Dr. Hanlon said, we have a large school system, um, with over fifteen thousand kids, close to three thousand employees. So we need good quality people to do a number of things, obviously teachers. Um, but we also need instructional assistants, people who help in the classroom. We need secretaries, custodial staff, cafeteria staff, maintenance facilities. We have a wide variety of needs because we're basically, you know, Dr. Hanlon leads a, a very large organization, so we, we need constant help.
Substitute teachers.
So where they can go to apply? So now I will add that.
Yes, so go to our website, WCBOE.org, and there's actually a link for careers. And multiple opportunities are posted there, and it kind of rotates. So if you don't see something today, check back next week, and there might be other opportunities as well.
Could talk a little, Dr. Briggs, about a couple weeks ago at Down Street Tucson's church?
Yeah, so Reverend Tucson, um, and I have a good working relationship, and he invited me to come in and talk with some of the members of his congregation. So myself and Dr. Pavick, our HR director, visited, talked to probably about thirty-five or forty people. It was a good turnout on a Saturday, and I shared in a little bit more detail what I just shared with you in regards to some of those opportunities that we have in our school system. And that, you know, we have a diverse student population, and we want and need a diverse workforce to help meet the needs of those kids, and so.
So that means eh, eh, you need people, for example, eh, who speak Creole, French, Spanish?
Yes, we do.
So I think it's a good thing to inform the community.
Yes.
Donc ça, docteur nous, les faire nous connais, j'ai dit à que gay position, gay job qui disponible dans communauté plus précisément na Éducation. Donc ça il dit, si on nous veut appliquer, il va les sous site là, et c'est W B O I C, d'accord?
W C B O E. W C B O E.
Yes, donc okasou, souleksa, donc, et l'entise C B O E point O R G A. Donc, okka choisi, pas sou senti ou confortable, adenak, okka rempli, okka appliqué pour job parce que yo, avec communauté ça, ou bien qui gue, qui valait plusieurs langues là, Creole, Français, Anglais, et Espagnol. Là, yo besoin monde qui, qui incompétent ça. Donc ça il dit que okka appliqué pour, pas sou senti, cap, fit wa bien pas sou senti que okka et rempli responsabilité. I said, the last was was responsibility.
Responsibility.
So let's move forward. I don't think people are afraid to ask question, I don't think so. Nous car il est, nous car, oui, mais ça, mais nous car il est connu à pour ne participer na émission parce que moi, c'est là vraiment important pour nous, surtout nous même qui na zone, Salisbury, Fruitland, là, extrêmement important, on bien dit na compte éwa Waikamiko, ou bien Waikamiko, pour nous connait comment, pour nous plus impliquer nous na formation Petitou, na Éducation Petitou parce que, l'air ou gay Petitou voy l'école, ou juste voy l'école, mais guider, bagay, ou pas connais comment là fonctionner na Éducation Petitou, bien na système Éducation. Donc, la empêche plus agi à la, et, et, et de façon intelligente pour qu'a permettre Petitou progresser, et en même temps, la bon pou. Et na pas pour tout, deux docteurs offrent comprend que, na ka, faire volontaire quel que soit niveau A pour système non, pour système Éducation non Waikamiko. I was thinking about how they can be more involved, like be a volunteer, a bike control, and the Waikamiko. So, I don't want to, because it's not time yet, I don't want to, to ask my, my last question. But for now, what I wanted to know, what is the big challenge you ever met in the Board of Education? This is a big one?
That is a big question.
Oh, wow.
That's a big question.
But I know you are very smart, you really.
Face with a variety of challenges every day, every day. Probably one of the things that we've already talked about, and that is parent involvement. Because we see how important that is, and so we're constantly working on ways to increase communication and encourage our parents to get involved. We, we do struggle sometimes with discipline problems in the school. I would not be being truthful if I didn't say that, but again, parent involvement is so critically important when we deal with situations that involve, or that have to do with student discipline. So those are the things that come to mind right off the top.
Yeah, both of those, I support. Um, I would also say, like, as a former high school principal, Dr. Hanlon was a former high school principal as well, um, getting students to see the value in their education, and getting them to see the value of earning that high school diploma, and how earning that degree opens up other opportunities for them in years to come. Um, many see it, but we do have a small percentage of our population who just do, do not see the value in earning that, they're earning that degree. Um, and then that causes an issue in the schools because they're not motivated to learn, they're not interested in going to class and doing what they're supposed to be doing. And you can imagine how that.
The challenge.
Yes, that's a challenge.
Big challenge, yeah. Because you, you cannot, I can say force, but you cannot ask a, a child to stay in class if he doesn't want.
No, and so our job is to try to find a variety of ways to reach them. Whether we have our CTE, Career and Technology Education Center, where students can go to Parkside High School and learn some of the trades, whether it's working on a car, or building a house, or working on computers, and engineer.
It's like a hand meeting?
Yep, lot of hands-on engaging instead of just sitting in a, a class. So we have those opportunities. We have a VPA program, Visual Performing Arts, for maybe somebody who loves to sing or likes to perform, so that they can share their artistic talents that way. And then we have Advanced Placement, where AP classes for those students who really want to go to college, and they're actually able to handle the rigors of a college-level class even when they're in high school. So we try to offer a wide variety of opportunities for our high school students so that they're better prepared to go out into the real world and help with society.
There's something I, I want, okay, this one. What are some programs in a place to motivate the students? We just talk about that.
We did. Uh, I can say one of the programs, so at Bennett, where the majority of our English language learners attend high school, uh, we have a step-up program, an after-school program, where we strongly encourage all students, it's open to everybody, but many of our English language learners stay for after-school program where they're able to get a meal every day after school, and they have a variety of engaging activities. They also have homework help. Um, it's a good social time where the students can interact in a non-necessarily academic setting, so it also helps with their English acquisition as well.
There's something I want to ask. You said there's a after, after-school program. So for, okay, if you have after-school program, it's from which age?
We have some programs at all ages. Mostly ours are at the middle and high school. Um, some of the elementary school programs are funded through outside agencies, like Waikamiko Rec and Parks, Recreation in Parks has like a kids' club. Um, some of our elementary schools, I can think of Prince Street off the top of my head, that provides, but others do as well, provide some clubs to tap into student interest. But the, the scheduled, regularly scheduled after-school programs that we offer are pretty much at the middle and high school level.
So that means if the parents doesn't ha, if not have time to, to assist their child, their children, I mean, so they can send the, the children to the after-school program? Okay, so I want to list another one. Can you share with them the phone number de axe? Okay, it's four four three, c'est quatre trois trois cinq huit zéro quatre trente. Okar il est na quatre trois trois cinq huit zéro quatre trente. You can call at four four three three five eight O four B.
Here we go.
Allo?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, I'm gonna have a question for the, actually.
For who?
The point people. Is it the point people or the?
Let's say the superintendent of the Board of Education of Waikamiko County.
Okay, superintendent, I'm sorry. I, I, yeah, I came in late, so I may not know what, what's already said. But I have a question, um, so this is superintendent. Uh, my name is Jackson. Um, I have, uh, my kid went to Waikamiko High School, and some of them still in Waikamiko High School. And then, uh, one of the problems that we found, that, uh, we have another kid that came here, and they went to the ESOL program. And it's a lot of the unique rent that we have to go to the ESOL program, ESOL.
Okay, ESOL.
Uh, we, we found some, some kids, um, they missed credit, they lose, lose some of the credit just because they have to miss class to go to a different school, uh, to get the ESOL. So my question is, what is the plan they are in place? Or why they don't have the ESOL class in every school?
That is a great question. And it's great because it's something that we're working on. We recognize that probably the, the way that we have had our ESOL program structured for a number of years may not be the best in terms of meeting the needs of our students. And for the very reason that you're talking about, or at least that's one reason, would be the travel time that it takes to travel from a student's home who's in the Waikamiko High School School District, who then has to travel to James M. Bennett for ESOL. So to answer your question, we are working on a plan that we hope to have in place by the beginning, by the fall of next year, where we have, where we're working intensely with our students who are new, um, new English language learners who have the most intense needs in what we're calling a newcomers program, that will all be in a particular area, a particular facility. Um, but then, once they have reached a certain level, we're not dismissing them from the program, but once they've achieved well enough that we believe that they can be successful by returning to their home school with ESOL support in their home school, that's what will happen. I don't know if you want to add to that, Dr. Briggs?
Yeah, I mean, we, as a former principal at Bennett, where those students all came, you're exactly right, that they missed time at both the beginning of the day and at the end of the day. Um, we actually, this past year, already made adjustments in, um, with the transportation department so that those students actually do not miss a class. They still miss some time, but they do not miss a class anymore this year. So that was a, a good first step. And the next step in that, as Dr. Hanlon mentioned, is having those students go to school in the, with the community that they live in, as opposed to having to transport and then go to a different school. We think it's important for them to be in the school where their neighborhood friends and associates are. Um, but it's still our responsibility to make sure they have the supports they need at those schools as well.
Yeah, the, the original, the original structure and what's continuing, um, for the most part now, was based upon the idea that it was more efficient to concentrate your staff, your support, in one location. But our ESOL population has grown so much, and in fact, last year, um, based upon additional funding that we received from the state as well as from the local government, we have add, added to the human resources that are available for the students who are studying in our ESOL program. And that will also help us to implement this plan that we've talked about, where students will be able to stay at their home schools.
Hello?
All right, I'd like to thank guys for the good work they have provided for the I have community who's, 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 that we are in place. Um, I really appreciate the information that we share with us tonight. And, um, I still got a couple more questions if they stand for.
You said a couple one.
All right.
Yes.
Now, the other question is that, with the enrollment question, um, basically, where they come to transfer to them? Uh, that is, uh, the student was, was on the area of Waihai, and they have to, they have, they have to, to different school, like they have to do, like, uh, for example, part, apartime, or then. Now, why, why the question is so hard? Then, if all the documents, if the student for over there, who, and they put this up, but all they have to do is know that they make a score. So why is it so hard for the parents? If they don't have all the documents as far as my collective, uh, collective, or that, they, they uh, went to all this, all mortgage documents. Why the student, they not, uh, phone to school? While, while the parents, it's why they still no documents there, they, why they have to, you know, they, you know, have to they ain't, and still, the parents find all these documents. So why is in place, you know, the question, the question of transfer?
I don't know if I can answer it perfectly. I do know that with our enrollment, and because of a wide variety of reasons, but we need to make sure we know where everybody is residing, where they live. So those proof of residencies, and that's what I think you were talking about, with the cable bill, or the electrical bill, or the lease, we have to have that for our documentation so that we know that you are indeed living where you say you're leaving, or living. Um, you, sir, probably would never lie to us. Unfortunately, we have some people who, um, actually, unfortunately, tell falsehood about where they're living so that they can go to a certain school for whatever reason. So we really do need that documentation for our own records, in case we were to get audited. in case we were to get audited by the state or, or the, somebody else. But students should not be missing any instructional time. So we, we can probably maybe talk offline about our process or a specific example that you might have had that where we could possibly look to improve our own practices. But unfortunately, we do need that documentation to show where, where people are living. We have actually had people from other counties try to enroll in our school system because we have such a good school system. But they don't even live in our county and that's why we need that documentation.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I understand that, what the enrollment process, but for transfers, it's that I was already in the, in, in one school and that's in the middle of the school system. The parents have to move to different locations and therefore it's going to have to transfer school. So why, why the students have to stay home?
They shouldn't have to stay, they shouldn't have to stay home. We don't want any kids staying home.
I think, I think, I think how many move and over where the students connect to the school. And I have a recent case, very recent case, where the students, the students move from, the parents move from one location to another location.